Good evening, everybody. Welcome. I just saw the bumblebee in the back. Okay. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for October 7th, 2025. Clerk, would you like to do the roll call?
Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Malakutian.
Here.
Councilmember Bargava.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Here.
And Councilmember Seaman Devaria.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. Please stand. You're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all. All right. So here's my notes. Okay. So we have three proclamations today. We have Indigenous Peoples' Day being read by Councilmember Nguyen-House, I believe, and received by Sharon Sini, ADA Title VI Equal Opportunity Officer for the City of Bellevue. Welcome. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Honored to read this proclamation this evening. Whereas Indigenous people have lived in the Puget Sound region since time immemorial, and whereas we acknowledge the land we are on as the ancestral homelands of the Coast Salish people, including the Duamish, the Sukamish tribe, the Makoshuud Indian tribe, and the Stokwami Indian tribe, and whereas Native communities and tribal nations across the countries have endured centuries of displacement, assimilation, violence, and erasure, yet continue to persevere and sustain their cultures, and whereas we express our deepest respect to the original caretakers of this land who continue to live here today and honor their heritage, and whereas Indigenous people have made and continue to make vital contributions to our region through stewardship of the environment, advancements in science and technology, leadership in the arts and literature, and countless other areas, and whereas the City of Bellevue reaffirms its commitment to equity, inclusion, and opportunity and to strengthening relationships with Native Americans, Alaska Natives, Native Hawaiians, and all Indigenous communities, now I therefore, Jared Nguyen-House, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of its City Council, do hereby proclaim October 13th, 2025, as Indigenous Peoples' Day here in Bellevue, Washington, and urge all residents to reflect on the history, the contributions, and the resilience of Indigenous people. Bellevue further commits to building strong relationships with our tribal neighbors and honoring the heritage and ongoing contribution of Indigenous communities.
Thank you, City Council members and honorable mayor. My name is Sharon Sini. Thank you for allowing me to be here. Sharon Sini Yenishe, Zinjekina Nishle, Kizani Hopi Fire Clan, Basijin, Honagatni Desuch Edo, Hopi Sun Clan, Dashanale. My name is Sharon, and I just said my four clans. My first clan is my mother's clan, which is Zinjekina, which is Dinef, from the Great Navajo Nation of Arizona. My second clan is who I'm born for, which is my protection clan, which is Fire Clan, which is from the Hopi tribe of northern Arizona. My third clan is my Che, my grandfather on my mother's side, which is Honagatni, which means "one that walks around," which is one of the original Navajo clans. My fourth clan is my Ma'ua from my Hopi side, and we are Sun Clan from that side. As an Indigenous woman and a veteran of the United States Navy, I am proud to be here working for Bellevue as a public administrator and as a professional here, working the disability inclusion, language access, programming, and equal opportunity. Most sincerely, this proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day represents the existence of my people and Indigenous people across the world who are still here and who still matter. May each of you walk in beauty today and every day. Hogenosli, 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 hogenosli. That means "I walk in beauty." Thank you.
Thank you so much. Please stay around, and at the end of all the proclamations, we'll do pictures. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Walk and Roll to School Day, read by Councilmember Bargava and accepted by Dr. Heather Sanchez, the Chief Operating Officer of our Bellevue District. Councilmember Bargava.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. So whereas Walk and Roll to School Day in October continues to encourage children to safely walk or roll to school or to the bus, school bus, while supporting the growth of safe routes to school programs across the United States and around the world, and whereas all children benefit when communities work to improve the safety of people walking and rolling, and whereas parents and caregivers play an important role in teaching children about safety when traveling to school and encouraging healthy habits that will last a lifetime, and whereas choosing to walk or roll as modes of transportation can help reduce traffic congestion and provide environmental benefits for the entire community, and whereas this year's Walk and Roll event is coordinated by Bellevue School Pool, a partnership between the City of Bellevue, King County Metro, and the Bellevue School District, encouraging families and students to explore safe, healthy, sustainable transportation options. Now therefore I, Vishal Bargava, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its City Council, do hereby proclaim October 8th, 2025, as Walk or Roll to School Day. In Bellevue, Washington, I encourage everyone to consider the safety, health, and well-being of children traveling to and from school today and every day.
All right. Thank you very much, and I'm pleased to accept this proclamation, and thank you to the council members and the mayor. My name is Dr. Heather Sanchez. I'm so pleased to be here to accept this, and I just want to take a moment to celebrate the partnership between the City of Bellevue and the Bellevue School District as we cultivate education, infrastructure, safety, and sustainability in our community. It's an exciting day this day and always, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here to accept the proclamation. Again, thank you very much. Thank you. And please stay around so we can do pictures after. And then our last proclamation is Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month, and I'm going to read this, and Aaron Hunt from Bellevue Overlake Medical Center is here to accept, so welcome. Whereas pregnancy and infant loss is a common but often unspoken tragedy that affects many families, and such losses can occur suddenly and without warning through miscarriage, stillbirth, preterm birth, sudden infant death syndrome, accident, or other causes or complications, and October 15th is recognized across the nation and around the world as a day of remembrance and awareness for pregnancy and infant loss. An increasing awareness of the causes and impacts of pregnancy and infant loss can foster greater understanding, support, and resources for families in our community, and this month is time to honor the lives of children taken too soon and to support grieving parents and families whose lives are forever changed by such loss. And recognizing Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month allows the people of Bellevue to reflect on how, as individuals and as a community, we can both support bereaved families and work to reduce preventable losses. Now therefore I, Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Pregnancy Loss, Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month in Bellevue, Washington, and encourage all residents to learn about ways to support grieving families and to raise awareness around opportunities for prevention and healing. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Robinson. Thank you, councilmembers.
My name is Aaron Hunt, and I am honored to be here. I am a labor and delivery nurse at Overlake, and on behalf of Overlake Perinatal Bereavement Team and all of the families who have suffered a loss, we thank you for acknowledging October to honor these tiny little lives. One of those families is here with me tonight, whose son Lucas I helped deliver sleeping at 38 weeks, and who has no doubt changed the lives forever, but also my own. His big sister Emmy is with me. I was also able to be with her when she was delivered. It is such a gift and an honor to walk with these families in loss and in true joy. The loss of a child, no matter their age, affects not just the parents, but the families, the grandparents, the friends, and the community that they live in. Their love for that baby was not just measured in weeks, but in their hopes and dreams of the future, the sound of their cry, their birthday parties, the future homecomings, their weddings. Every loss of these tiny little lives is an enormous tragedy and a loss, and we are so grateful that we, as a community, will honor them with some extra special love in October. For those who have suffered, I stand with you. I understand you, and you are not alone, and you never have to forget your baby, and there is a community surrounding you here for when you are ready. Thank you for this time and this honor.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Do we have anybody signed up for oral communications, Clerk?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. There are two pre-registered speakers on tonight's list, so before I start calling names, I'll go over a few of the rules that the council has in place. The total time of oral communications is for a period of no more than 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to City of Bellevue government. People speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, people speaking to items not on tonight's agenda will be called. The presiding officer in both of those categories is authorized to give preference to those who have not spoken to council within the last 60 days, or who will be speaking on items that will come in front of the council within the next 60 days. So each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and only three speakers are allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. Then additionally, I want to remind folks that in compliance with Washington State campaign laws regarding the use of public facilities during elections, no speaker may support or oppose a ballot measure, or support or oppose a candidate for election, which includes one's own campaign. Anyone starting to speak on these topics will be asked to stop. So with that, I will call our first speaker, who is Joe Kunsler.
And I'm going to add also in general that I ask that the speakers be polite and refrain from obscene language and rudeness, and express their opinions on topics that have to do with the Bellevue City Council.
I do not, actually, I do see a hand now, sorry. Mr. Kunsler is joining us virtually.
Oh, thank you so much. Sorry, technical difficulties.
That's fine. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Joe Kunsler here, concerned friend of Bellevue. Tonight, I understand you have a resolution about making sure there's accountability for certain misdemeanor crimes. However, it has come to my attention that there are some crimes that King County Court, District Court will not restore into competency. One of them is a trespass violation, and you're probably wondering, how do I know this? Real simple. Alex Zimmerman recently got off because he was found incompetent in a stand trial, and the King County District Court, who I blame 100% for this, made a determination. I think when you debate and deliberate tonight on this new legislation, you need to make sure that the King County District Court will restore the competency, because I think that that's what you want. I think it's what the justice system deserves, and I will say that your prosecutor and deputy prosecutor did everything correctly and rightly, as well as assigned defense counsel on contract to the City of Bellevue. The attorneys weren't the issue here. The proceed, in my opinion, the procedures of the King County District Court were, and I'm very disappointed in them for the attorneys who performed admirably in a case of much public interest. I will say, with a minute left to go, that I notice Mr. Zimmerman is there tonight. I ask that he not issue a Nazi salute or make any other references to genocidal dictators because of what happened two years ago. One over 1,100 Jews were killed, and on top of it, there was a rise of antisemitism that started that night. It changed the calculation for me and for others who I won't speak for, they can out themselves in the re, when you have meetings of certain regional bodies, that we have to not allow or accept references to World War II to be just water off the duck's back. I find the call, the statement that Zimmerman makes at the beginning, a borderline death threat because of this history. I ask that it stop. I want to thank you for your public service. I want to especially again thank the Bellevue City Attorney and his staff, as well as the Defense Council for their public service, and hope we can see some positive change come out of this situation. Thank you again.
The next speaker on our list is Alex Zimmerman.
Oh, it's me. Thank you very much. Very appreciate you. I'm sorry. I'm disabled, man. I'm so sorry. Yeah, my name, Alex Zimmerman, yeah. Oh, guys, you see this? Yeah. Stop, Mayor Robinson, Nazi Gestapo pig, and antisemite. It's exactly what is I want to speak right now. Why Bellevue City so antisemite? It's very important, yes, right now, because we have too many problems right now with antisemitism, yeah. So happy Jewish holiday today and for another 5,000 year. And today, very important day, what is Bellevue Council not respond to this. Two years ago, you trespassed me, the 7th of October, because approximately 2,000 Jewish people in Israel killed by Iranian bandito. Mayor Robinson cut me, and policemen arrest me because I have this opinion. This exactly happened now and happened two years ago, in 7th of October, when I speak here, because by definition, you're not only antisemite, you are bandito, a Nazi Gestapo pig, is exactly who you are, and for 35 year, you're fighting only with one man, refugee, old, disabled, Jewish man, for 35 year. Look how many rules you change. 15 year ago, you changed rules only for Alex Zimmerman. So only 30 minute, and 10 people can speak, and 150,000 people cannot speak because you're Nazi pig. You are a Nazi pig, yeah. Right now, couple weeks ago, you changed a new rules only for Alex Zimmerman. So you right now want to trespass me for six months. I only one man who you terrorize, trespass, five times prosecute, and five times I win. I win five times for 35 years. You understand about you talking? So I speak right now to everybody, so this Nazi Gestapo antisemite pig who don't understand, we exist for 5,000 year. We will be exist for another 5,000 year. It's not a question about this, but when call council identical in acting like a Nazi antisemite, it's a very important point for everybody. You need stopping this. It's America. You cannot doing this because you antisemite, and because Alex Zimmerman have different opinion, and because I am a Jew, and I'm disabled. This exactly what is Nazi Hitler did this, you know what it mean? Killed Jew and kill disabled people, and you doing exactly same. So right now, I speak to everybody. Viva Trump! Viva new American Revolution! Stand up! Slav and happy cow! This America! Thank you very much.
That is the end of our pre-registered speakers list, so I'd asked at this point if there's anyone else who would like to make comment to the council this evening, please raise your hand. Mr. Sergeant, I see your hand. Please come forward.
My name's Lee Sergeant, and I live across River Interlake High School and have done so for over 46 years, so it's been a while. And one of the things that I've experienced in the last almost three years now, that I have been in the presence of such esteemed people as you, I have seen you do your job. I've seen you disagree, and you know what? People in this city disagree, but you always come to some conclusion, and I think you have focused in ways that are helpful to the city and to the people that you represent, no matter what they say or how they say it. And they don't always understand it, but I do, and I think I've been here during every session during those years and watched you represent those people, and I appreciate you very much. Thank you.
You, there are no additional hands online. I'll do one final call out in chambers. Okay. No hands, Mayor. I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendars.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we have two study session items tonight, ones for information only, the first one, the second one's for direction. I'll have the city manager introduce these for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, and councilmembers. Very happy tonight to have Emile King, our Director of Community Development, and Liz Flores, our Cultural Tourism Specialist here, this evening to give you an overview of some of the planning work that's underway for the 2026 FIFA World Cup. It will bring lots of attention to our region with Seattle hosting six matches, and we want to be a city that's poised and ready to welcome the visitors, and that's what Mr. King and Ms. Flores will be sharing with you this evening, what our planning work is to date and what's yet to come. And so with that, I will hand it over to Emile.
Thank you for the introduction, City Manager Carlson, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Liz and I are really happy to be here tonight to describe the city's game plan for the 2026 World Cup. As the city manager noted, this is a significant event, and the Seattle-Bellevue region is very fortunate to be a host city for a number of games here. In just 35 weeks and two days, the 2026 World Cup does kick off, and the first game's going to be in Mexico City, Mexico. This World Cup is unique in that there are three host countries, so we have Mexico, United States, and Canada, all sharing the hosting responsibilities. And just four days later, the first of the six matches will occur on June 15th during our beautiful summers here at Lumen Field in the City of Seattle. Just as far as introduction, soccer has been described as both the world's game and the beautiful game. It's played in many countries, and it's estimated that there are 3.5 billion fans worldwide, so that's out of about 8 billion people who live in the, in the world. And what we'll be describing tonight is our detailed game plan for what Bellevue is going to do to be part of this team locally, to really welcome folks to this region, both close in, statewide, nationally, and international folks who are going to be visiting here as well, and most importantly, to make it a really cool event for our residents and businesses, so it is a memorable thing for them in years and decades to come. Tonight is information only. As the excitement has been building in this region, we're going to share with you both the overall strategy, and then we're going to drill down into some of the specific plans for Bellevue. The agenda, where Liz is going to go into some detail, we'll talk about what to expect leading into 2026, and specifically for the five weeks that the World Cup will be occurring, so all of the 104 games, and specifically on the three-week period where there's going to be games in this region. We'll also go in next to the regional context of how we are part of a broader set of entities, that's cities, county, businesses, nonprofits, all doing the collective work to welcome visitors, and most importantly, provide a great experience for folks who live and work in this area. We'll then go into details of Bellevue's specific plan, so we've thought long and hard about how to capitalize on our proximity to the City of Seattle. We'll have the East Link Light Rail open by then, so we're, we'll be focusing on how we can use our regional connectivity to really be a way that we can benefit from this. And then Liz will go into what to expect next. We have some things even starting up later this month that we'll describe to you.
Thank you. Okay. So as was mentioned, the 2026 World Cup will be the largest ever spanning three countries and across the North American continent. This is the most-watched sporting event in the world, with about 5 billion views last tournament. In comparison, a Super Bowl has about 115 million views, and while these numbers are great, it's, the games are going to be spread across the three countries, spreading the tourism across the continent. While we have been developing our World Cup strategies, it's important to note that we do not know which teams will be playing in the cities until after the official draw on December 5th. After this event, we will also know if any team has decided to stay in our area in what is called a base camp. This too could determine the number of visitors we receive and will, will inform our future These are the dates of the six games that we have in Seattle. They are all weekday games. Now I'm going to give you a little bit of the regional context. This is what's going to be happening in our state. While initial media reported that we could expect 750,000 more visitors to King County during the World Cup, a recent study from Deloitte and from Tourism Economics and CoStar have reported that we can expect about 145,000 more visitors to the county than we normally do. This is our high period during our high tourism period, and while occupancy is over 81% during this time, but it's good to note that we will have a different profile of visitors during this region. So people who may have chosen to come to Seattle might not come during this time and might come after or before, but they will be replaced by World Cup tourists. The Seattle Center is going to host the official FIFA Fan Zone, offering large-scale viewing experiences, entertainment, and cultural programming. This is the primary official fan zone and the only one in King County. Additional fan zones are being planned in nine communities across Washington State. Fan zones were chosen by the local organizing committee in order to spread, spread across the state, broad participation, and to bring festivities to many different areas, communities large and small. The Seattle Chamber and other regional partners are offering grant funding to support World Cup-related activities outside of Seattle. These grants are designed to empower community organizations, small businesses, to host their own events and activations, bringing tournament to neighborhoods across the region. Playbooks and webinars are also happening to inform the community about how to participate. Here are some of the local and community impacts we can expect. As the state's second-largest hotel market, we are well, we are well-prepared to welcome 15,000 World Cup visitors that we currently expect in Bellevue. These additional visitors are expected to give an economic impact of 23 million to the city. The projected economic impact includes direct spending at hotels, shops, small businesses, and local attractions, all supporting jobs in Bellevue. The visitor profile will be different, giving us an opportunity to showcase our community to new people who may become repeat visitors. We're planning opportunities for residents to engage in World Cup festivities without needing a ticket to the game. Expect food, music, and cultural events. Finally, we are working to build a package of repeatable activations to improve city processes and expand communication in a way that can be used for future events, leaving a lasting impact on Bellevue's cultural and economic landscape. The World Cup is an excellent opportunity not only to get ready for the world stage, but also to advance work that will benefit our community for years to come. We're working with several different city departments to move this forward. Some of the things you can expect in the coming months include infrastructure and maintenance investments, like improvements to light poles around the Grand Connection, and a new large-scale mural in the Bellred Arts District. Across the city, our department Across the city, our departments are getting ready with parks and fam both holding dates in parks and spaces around the city for community-proposed World Cup-related events. Several departments are working together to explore streamlining the block party processes ahead of the World Cup so that our residents can lead with programs that make sense for their neighborhoods while informing them of rules and processes that they need to make this happen successfully. We have webpages dedicated to the World Cup. The city of Bellevue's webpage will focus primarily on official information, business resources, and city programs. Visit Bellevue also has a webpage with World Cup game info, regional activities, visitor information, a calendar of events, and business promotions. And that's what you can see on the slide right now. Based on the information we currently have and on expected visitation, and because we do not know where teams will play until they're announced on December 5, we've planned the following. On Seattle match days, we'll encourage residents and visitors to take the two-line to major events and work with the community so that Bellevue's busiest stations will have lively programming before, during, and after the matches. For matches outside of Seattle, we'll promote watch parties around the city and at local venues. We will support community-led events near transit hubs and in neighborhoods across the city with improved processes. Here's a little more detail on the two-line activations. We're going to work with partners to curate programming around the two-line stations, including South Bellevue, Downtown, Spring District, and Bellred. On game days, we're going to encourage sustainable travel for those going to the games, running an errand, or simply walking by. These activations can be music, soccer-themed activities, cultural performances, and more. Partnered with this, we will have tours and itineraries around each light rail station, which will highlight the things to do in each neighborhood, hopefully drawing people out into our community. These themed walks will be a rich resource for everyone. Future visitors will be able to use them to explore Bellevue and residents will be able to discover new ways to engage with their city. Small businesses will be meaningfully showcased. The marketing will happen through Visit Bellevue, which has an array of effective marketing tools. There's already a calendar on Visit Bellevue's site which highlights things to do in the city. We intend that this way of activating public spaces and process improvements we are working on and regular communication with our partners across the city will leave a positive legacy even after the tournament is over. As mentioned, we are not working alone. We're working, we meet with the East Side Regional Tourism Council, whose members are our neighboring East Side cities, and discuss strategies, ideas, share resources, and inform each other about the work that we are doing ahead of the tournament. We're working with the district management organizations pictured on your screen, such as BDA, Bellred Arts District, Spring District, and Visit Bellevue in the planning of our future community events and business readiness. We have had discussions with the city of Redmond and Bothell to ensure that we're able to amplify each city's efforts. These relationships, regular meetings, and focused communication will ensure that we will be ready for the World Cup each step of the way. Coming up next, we have a public information session and a call for station activations on October 22. This is where we will inform our local events organizers and cultural organizations of grant opportunities and the partnerships that we will offer ahead of the tournament. Human trafficking is an unfortunate issue that is always present in our communities. And Bellevue PD does a wonderful job making sure our businesses are well-prepared in situations where these problems may arise. We intend to work with PD to amplify these efforts ahead of the tournament to train businesses to recognize how to know and how to respond to the signs of human trafficking. Communication is key and we will work to ensure that business readiness resources are shared with our community, ensuring that those who can participate and want to will benefit from the World Cup. Our work is evolving as more information about the tournament becomes public.
Mayor, that concludes our presentation. We're happy to hear any feedback you have and answer any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you. I assume we all have comments or questions. So let's start with Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's a great, great opportunity. We're going to showcase this region to the world. So we are looking forward to it. But obviously, you know, with what's good, there's something always perhaps can be some problematic. So I just want to ask a few things. First of all, you mentioned connection to Redmond along the two-line and all that. How about going east I-90 toward east of the mountain, east of Quah and Semamish? So a lot of things like Snoqualmie, Fall, many things people appreciate. People can look at, you know, mountains and lakes and all that stuff. So perhaps, you know, either that should be looked at. If it's not, maybe you can show something. How do we work with our neighboring jurisdictions going east? That might be something to look at. And the other ones, even going south, you know, to Renton, that might be something also. Because Bellevue is, we are the center of the region, honestly. West Seattle, north, you know, Lenoir, Redmond, and so on, Everett, and east to east of Quah, south to Renton. So I think that maybe we can figure out to provide an even more opportunity for people coming to this area to learn about our features and our wonderful place where they can visit. So maybe you can tell me, are you looking at this? And maybe if you do, say a couple of things. And I will have one last question. Go ahead.
Sure, I can start off with that one. Yes, it's a great point, Councilmember Lee, that we're going to have folks coming to this region, likely for the first time. So as we learn what teams are actually playing here, we'll have visitors, first time to this region. It's great to have Visit Bellevue as a partner in this effort. They have a lot of good material that showcases Bellevue as a good place to stay, stay in a hotel, use our amenities in our city, but also a launch point to go north, south, east, west, to enjoy all the great tourism amenities we have in this region. So I think you point out a great benefit to being a host region from a tourism standpoint to have new people come here and showcase this entire area.
Right. You did mention how to connect to Redmond. So I would like to maybe see you develop some specific ideas go into the other cities as well.
Yeah, Liz, do you want to talk a little bit about our coordination with City of Redmond?
You don't have to say it now because I don't want to interrupt your presentation. But I'll get to the next point. That, let's see. Public safety, traffic, you know, these are things when we have tourists coming, when we have 140,000 people here. Not all of them will climb at once, but hopefully a lot of them would. So how do we do to prevent these activities to interrupt with our local communities? You mentioned about human trafficking, but we have, this now brings international trafficking, which is probably going to be magnified many times. It is different. So I'd like to make sure that we can handle that or at least prevent that or manage it. The second, of course, public safety in general. Be more people there, more other things, maybe shoplifting even, I don't know. When we have a crowded street, things can happen. Or incidentally, it could be having accidents. Second, the traffic, obviously, that's going to have a bearing on people who live and live in Bellevue. So maybe you can talk a little bit about the two.
Yeah, so Liz is our main point person working across a number of departments at the city. So as we flesh out where our events are going to be in the city, looking at the game days, as Liz mentioned, are all weekdays. So we'll dial in on the time of day to look at peak loads from both a pedestrian standpoint and a traffic standpoint. We think people in Bellevue are likely going to be going to our park-and-rides, using those as a good launch point to get over to Seattle or go to other places along the two-line up into Redmond. And you did mention the very serious issue of human trafficking. There are other things that we'll be working with our police and fire departments about having events that are well-planned, well-staffed, and safe for our community.
We have to make sure we have resources to handle that in addition to just keeping our city safe normally anyway. So just keep that in mind.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentations. It's all very, very exciting. Certainly appreciate all the planning that's going into making this a fun and entertaining and exciting time for the community. Of course, have a wonderful opportunity to welcome visitors from around the country and around the world and show them what makes Bellevue such a special place. Couple of just quick questions for you. You've mentioned a few times that local activities are focused on the Bellevue Light Rail stations. I'm just wondering what adjustments you're going to make to how we approach the World Cup if light rail service is not available across the lake by the time the World Cup starts.
We're in close communication with Sound Transit. As of now, everything is set to go as planned with the Light Rail Revenue Service opening ahead of the World Cup date. We are confident that the activations will benefit the community currently riding. We will have more tourists in our area at this time. We'll also have our workforce that already takes the light rail and so they could be going to Renton or they could be going through Bellevue to the Arts District. We are working and we believe that it's still a benefit to our community.
Yeah, if it does turn out that things are delayed, we'll want to look at, you know, the regional bus service and clearly trying to get as much bus service that can go across the lake to get people to the games. And we have some wonderful park-and-rides in the city of Bellevue as well.
Okay, good. Yes, certainly hope that it all goes as planned, but I'm glad to know you're thinking of some other options if for some reason it doesn't. Also, too, just in the agenda memo, you talked a little bit about the World Cups, a chance for local entrepreneurs to showcase their unique offerings and for cultural institutions to share the rich heritage and creativity that makes Bellevue so special. I'm just wondering, and you talked a little bit about this, and maybe you might have a little bit more to add about that and kind of, you know, what exactly that support looks like. So what are we doing in the outreach? But then maybe you could talk a little bit about what those kinds of groups could do on their own. I mean, is there, are there some resources, some things they can do to kind of just enhance the World Cup experience more on their own? Places they could go to look?
Yeah, so we're going to be providing resources for people who want to participate in support that we have directly to them. This year, we've been doing the Community Programming Fund, which has been very successful in our view that is a bit of a test case to be able to have culturally-based events in the city of Bellevue. And now, next year, we can repeat that, grow it quite a bit, and have it focused on that month of soccer in the World Cup. So if people want to participate in that event, we have the October 22nd is our first kind of welcome and getting people acclimated to that, answer questions, have any ideas they have. And then Liz, if you want to talk about just in general, if people want to do soccer-related things in the community, resources that we and others have up?
Yeah, we are preparing the community. We have a city FIFA webpage that has resources. It links people to official information from the local organizing committee, which includes playbooks, watch party guides that will help prepare our small businesses and large businesses to do what they want to do during the time.
And that'll be regularly updated so as we are going through it. What about in addition to the webpage? What about email alerts or text alerts? Is there a plan for that so that, you know, we can kind of get that information out to folks and maybe especially community members who might be impacted by an event? Any plan for that?
We're currently working on setting up an email address that people will be able to email and contact us directly. And then we'll forward that to any appropriate department most relevant to whatever their question is.
And then as we plan some of the events that might impact a portion of the city, getting knowledge that those events are occurring and if they tend to be on the bigger size, going through our appropriate measures to let the community know that we do have something happening on that specific day.
Okay, I think it might be great if there was a chance for community members to sign up for alerts so that that stuff could hit their phone or their email so that just as things are going, they can plan accordingly and hopefully get involved and have a good time. Great work, super excited to see this all come to Bellevue. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Excuse me, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Noonhouse.
Thank you. Very important question. What are we doing to ensure that the Netherlands will be playing here in Seattle? Because then we'll surpass our 15,000 and it'll be a sea of orange everywhere. And the only thing we'll have to worry about is running out of Heineken and Dutch cheese. Kidding, of course. But I am so excited about this. Thanks so much for the update. Haven't been to World Cups previously and haven't been a professional soccer player myself previously. This is just amazing that we're going to have the opportunity to participate in this way. Thank you, thank you, thank you in all seriousness for bringing up the human trafficking. This is a huge issue that FIFA has identified and it happens every single World Cup. Are we coordinating with them and taking away any key learnings from past World Cups, be it South Africa, Italy, Spain, wherever? Are we working in coordination with them or even connecting them with BPD to understand how it works differently? If it does work differently at a World Cup versus another type of major event?
I think we're working with Bellevue PD, who has a little bit more expertise in this area. And they're going to be working with external partners. I can give you more detail later this week.
Okay, well, I would just encourage to reach out to FIFA as we get closer here because I know they have a playbook for this sort of thing because I've dealt with it time and time again. So I would just encourage you to do that. Additionally, have you been connected yet with, I guess, King County and Seattle in terms of the transportation issues? Being on the East Side, transportation. We just got an update in terms of what this is going to look like from the Seattle side. But there would be a lot of coordination going on with the East Side. So have we been in talks with King County Metro and other transit authorities to ensure that we're on the same page?
Sound Transit is aware of our plans and they're supportive. So we're working with them. But we're also working with the local organizing committee and Chamber of Commerce in Seattle, learning from them and resources.
It'd be great if we could get a little bit more as we start to get closer because I think some of my colleagues, you know, have some concerns around that too, especially if, you know, light rail. Yes, you're right, but just in case, we need some alternatives here. And I just think the full scope of options that people are going to have, it would be great to have maybe a fuller presentation on that as you update us as we get closer and after we know who's coming after that December 5th, the time where we're going to announce the games. That would be great. On the art installations, will those be permanent or will those just be temporary for the World Cup? And is there any way for residents or art organizations that are based in Bellevue to participate in that?
These, yes. It will be a permanent mural in the Bellred Arts District. We're also working on utility box wraps, I believe. And residents can interact with us And residents can interact with us through the Arts Commission for this.
Okay, will we actually be proactively outreach and say, this is an opportunity or do they have to reach out to the Arts Commission?
This will be part of our outreach.
It will be, okay.
So the, the art is part of the outreach that's upcoming.
Okay, and then you mentioned on, I think it was slide eight, streamlined processes. Which processes are gonna be streamlined and what will the impact be?
Yeah, we're working cross-departmentally to look at maybe block party, streamline, streamlining block parties.
Oh, for permits and?
Permitting and making things easy to understand for residents.
So this, this summer has been a good experience with the Community Programming Fund. So we've been helping out people who were successful award recipients to streamline that, that effort to actually do things out there. So more to come, we think there's, there is gonna be more events next year, bigger events, so we have a good footing right now that we can build on for next year.
That's terrific. And then last question around the, the kiosk. Obviously, Visit Bellevue has got the great mobile kind of kiosk about, you know, restaurants, hotels, et cetera, et cetera. Are they planning on expanding those number or, or having them out, I guess, in the field more, more often during that month during the World Cup? Because they're such great informational kiosks for anyone who's new to the city trying to figure out, you know, anything from what park to go to or what restaurant or hotel. Will that all be, well, if they, it's probably gonna be too late if they're looking at that for a hotel night, but any other type of information would be really important.
Yeah, we'll get more info from Visit Bellevue about if they're gonna use what they have or if they're gonna actually expand for, for 2026.
Okay, great, thank you so much and thanks for the great presentation.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Sumaduria.
Thank you. I think it's, at first, I wanna give a big praise to Lizette. I think before Eva was being the council, she actually, and also the city staff, was really proactive about how to learn about anti-human trafficking. And that was really great because we are thinking ahead. And, you know, as a proud community ambassador for human, anti-human trafficking myself, I think it's really important through the knowledge and the training to know how to prevent it, that's the best step to do. For the anti-human trafficking awareness training, is there any organization that we are working with to provide professional training for like, maybe like street, street activation, like retail spaces or the mall? Like, what, what does that look like?
Yeah, we have been in conversation with a particular organization. We are just, again, coordinating cross-departmentally with Bellevue PD to find the best approach for our city. So we do want to expand what we normally offer and expand into businesses as well.
Thank you. Which, which organization is that?
Best?
Okay, perfect. Another question I had was about this small business readiness, resources. Because I think there's some grants going on with the Chamber side, right, the Business Readiness Grant. What can we offer from Bellevue to support small businesses? And then also trying, I think this is a great opportunity to attract business.
Well, we're currently going to be working for, to offer grants for the activations and provide information about the resources that are available. And as they come available, make sure that everybody knows how to engage in a way that's best for their business.
That's it, that's all my question. I'm excited to learn about the space activation. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Bargava.
Okay, thank you. First of all, you know, like Councilmember Noonhouse, I, soccer was my first sport of choice growing up. Even though I grew up in the land of cricket, so you say something. To call it football, as most of the world calls it, at that point. Also, I think your data on three billion, Emil, could be wrong, I think it's understated, could be larger than that. I think outside of the Olympics, the Soccer World Cup, I think, is the biggest sporting event every four years for the world. So this is incredible opportunity and really excited to be, looking forward to it. Couple things, three things actually I wanted to talk about. One is focus on sort of, sort of encouraging of local spending and are we thinking about anything that is leading up to the World Cup? Like, pre-World Cup events, like even like, we do movies in the park and things like that. We could do, you know, top goals or finals of previous World Cups that folks could really build excitement with and get involved in, in sort of the teams and, you know, showcase the teams that are playing or something like that, just building up to it so that it starts to create some resonance within the community. Have you thought about anything leading up or just during?
We are thinking about both, so we're, we're starting with this event in the next couple of weeks. There is an excitement in this region and in the city of Bellevue, so we'll, we'll make sure that we, we have a great five weeks of the World Cup next summer, three weeks of the games here. And then we will be thinking about how we can have soccer kind of front and center between now and the summer of next year. Within, within the, the city hall, we're already actually incorporating it into a lot of the things we're doing as city staff and some of the routine events that we do as well.
Yeah, I mean, I would encourage us to think about strategy leading up to it and how we can get some of our business folks, like the Chamber and others who are providing support and also small businesses involved, to try and create, you know, an inclusion and the opportunity to actually take advantage of the massive traffic increase we're gonna get, which is a real opportunity. The other thing I would say is, like on safety, I think there's a lot said that, I'll just add a couple of things. One, emergency response, I think we have to be thoughtful about when we have that many people coming in, what are we going to do to make sure that we're, our emergency response readiness is right on top? And what we need for additional capacity or backup or business continuity, like that's really, really important, especially when we're hosting so many people from around the world, that becomes important. The other thing I would think about is sort of increased transit safety is another really important thing to just keep in mind because, I mean, soccer has a reputation of football. And so we wanna be careful and we wanna think about that and be prepared for that. And also, you know, while this is sort of a, sort of a Debbie Downer comment, but like, we should think about sheltering in place and wayfinding and evacuation routes for any emergencies. And, you know, we should be prepared, not expecting anything to happen, but that's really important for us to be prepared from things that we don't think can happen, but you never know. So I would just put that in a list of things to think through that we have to, especially in public spaces where we have large public gatherings happening that we don't frequently have in the city at the scale. And then the last thing I would talk about maybe is the sort of mobility, parking requirements and things like that. But even things like transit frequency for buses or for our Light Rail, like especially, you know, pre-game or post-game opportunities where we think about a faster and more, like the capacity needs might increase for those durations of time. And what are we doing in partnership with our regional partners and our transit partners, et cetera, would be things I would just encourage us to think more about. Otherwise, really excited and this is great, thank you so much for the really great presentation.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you both, Emil and Liz, for bringing this update. I think there are great question already have been asked. I'm, I think I just have maybe three additional question. I think I, I'm going to also emphasize in, like other council member, in given the larger scale of coordination with Sound Transit, with Visit Bellevue, with Wachdott, neighborhood cities. I think we are going to need to have a risk management approach to all of these. The, the traffic has been mentioned, the transportation has been mentioned, the crowd management and the public safety already has been mentioned. And as you mentioned, we have three, 35 weeks and two days, so hopefully we are going to have or act together for that. I love you mentioned that this is not just going to be a World Cup, this is going to be a legacy impact or something in the. When I hear all of these words, I'm becoming very happy, but then the immediate question would be what metrics do we have to measure the legacy impact that you are referring to? Do we have one?
We, we haven't developed the full suite of, of metrics, but that's a, a good point that we'll put a pen to paper on getting those written up. I mean, at the high level, it's number of visitors and spending and things like that, but to, to be a true legacy, there's more than that.
More to.
The, the different events we have and really selling this region, yeah.
That's awesome. So, so I think you're talking about two metrics. One would be the success of this programming for the World Cup, that's great, I think you should have metrics, but also the legacy impact that continues and we are prepping for that, I think would be awesome. The, I think the last question I have actually has been mentioned and talked, I think I'm good, thank you so much, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I've got three things here. So I've been, it was Ride Your Bike or Don't Drive week last week, so I, and my car broke anyway. So anyway, I was, been doing a lot of bike riding and just those holes in the connections between Light Rail and key parts of the city. So, you know, Old Bellevue is a pretty popular part of town, whenever we ask the community, that ranks pretty high. And we still have an incomplete bike path from our East Main Light Rail Station to Old, Old Main. And it just, you know, if we could just put some paint there that shows that the cars have to share the lane with the bike. I, I just really want to expedite some of this work to have it done by the time people come, because they're not allowed to park in Seattle. So you're gonna have a lot of people looking for multi-modal transportation. And I think it's, you know, it's incumbent upon us to provide safe routes for them. So that would be a priority for me. Number two is, we're gonna have like a calendar of, of events on the Visit Bellevue website, but I don't know that everybody knows to go there first. So I hope that the city of Bellevue website has a big banner that forwards people to the Visit Bellevue website. And I, like Councilmember Bargava, I think we're gonna have a lot more people than we're anticipating. And I think there's gonna be a lot more cars on the road in Bellevue as people try to figure out how to take Light Rail and bus in. And we have a lot of people going to work at the same time who are gonna still be wanting to park their cars and get on the bus or Light Rail. And I don't wanna crowd them out, so I hope that we're looking for alternative parking. I know our South Bellevue Park and Ride is pretty empty. We have lots of space there, but maybe we can look at church properties and, and make some agreements with them, especially if Light Rail does not end up being open. That would be really helpful to have that already figured out, that we can just do shuttles from there or something. So those are my thoughts.
Great points, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have another study session item and this one, we are going to have a vote on, take action, City Manager.
And given all of the conversation about being prepared, this is a good timely presentation, because we have Carl Lunak, who's our Emergency Preparedness Manager. And also Kristi Osterbein from Transportation here tonight. They are going to present the Hazard Mitigation Plan and also a Disaster Debris Management Plan. These are very important parts of our emergency management overall strategy and approach. And the Hazard Management Plan in particular helps us identify potential hazards and to develop mitigation strategies to improve our preparedness. This took several years to get to this point tonight of presenting it to you and it had lots of input from city staff across all of our departments and our response partners and also community members. And we have a consultant also online, I believe, Christina Wolman, who is with Partit, who provided assistance with developing the plan. And then our Disaster Debris Management Plan is, is something that also is very critical and, given our experience last year with the bomb cyclone, that was a little bit of a taste and I'm sure Kristi will go into more detail on that. So with that, I will hand it over to Kristi.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakushen and council members for allowing us to be here today to give you an overview of our Hazard Mitigation Disaster Debris Management Plans. So we're here asking direction to be able to get some consideration to return with a resolution to actually adopt our City of Bellevue Hazard Mitigation Plan at a future council meeting. As well as giving you some information about our Disaster Debris Management Plan process. So tonight, we're gonna give you kind of an overview of how all of the emergency management plans really work together. We'll talk about the Hazard Mitigation Plan, we'll talk about the Disaster Debris Management Plan and we'll go to next steps. Carl?
All right, well, good evening. Not quite as exciting as World Cup, but nonetheless, emergency plans it is. We have a lot of different types of emergency plans across the city, as you would expect. A lot of those plans are tactical, very incident-specific, a lot of standard operating procedures, especially for our operational departments across the city. We also have strategic plans. The Office of Emergency Management lays out a three-year strategic plan that rolls up into Fire Strategic Plan and other departments function very similarly. And then we have our big arching umbrella plan that all the rest of our plans kind of fold up into, and that is our Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. Within that, two key pieces we have completed this year and are real excited to, to kind of get across the finish line. And those are our Hazard Mitigation Plan and our Disaster Debris Management Plan. This is a, a brief example of our kind of regular cycle in emergency management, how we function. Before we get into it too much, we need to talk, well, what is the definition of mitigation? And quite simply, it's any action taken to reduce future disasters or the impacts, lessen the impacts to the community as a whole. And we look at mitigation as a key piece. It's ongoing and continual, it never really stops. It fits in there with preparedness, protection, recovery, response and so on. And it's a continuous cycle that we work from. Specifically, the, the benefits and the purpose of our Hazard Mitigation Plan, well, it starts with identifying all of the natural hazards in our community. It does differentiate between like human-caused emergencies or disasters. This plan specifically speaks to the natural hazards that impact our beautiful community. We look at what those hazards are and then kind of judge how probable it is to occur and then what the impacts potentially are from those. So we assess that information, look at what our vulnerabilities, what our capabilities are to respond and recover from. And that's based on historical data as well as the latest information that we have about our communities. The benefits of mitigation and our mitigation plan really comes down to a cost savings. I mean, it really boils down to that. Yes, it helps protect us, make us more resilient, it does a lot of beneficial, allows us to plan better and coordinate with our community members and partners. But really, it comes down to dollars and there's different figures, whether you're talking the business community or city government, where for every dollar of mitigation that you spend, it usually saves you between six and $13 worth of response and recovery post-disaster. So mitigation actions are usually dollars very well spent in the community. Our planning process, similar to a lot of our other plans, this particular planning process began with a grant, very thankful to our Transportation Department. When we were in a transition between emergency managers, Transportation took the lead with Hazard Mitigation Planning and was able to get this process started with a FEMA grant. We followed, of course, a competitive bidding process to retain a contractor that is joining us remotely. Partit was selected in that process. We pulled together basically every department here across the city. It truly is a one-city planning process because mitigation and hazards affect us all. And so all the departments had opportunity to be in the steering or planning committee and provide input into this plan and the planning process. A big piece of that is also our community outreach. We really wanna reach out to the community as a whole, know what's on their mind, where their concerns are, what the hazards are specific to their community. And we did that through a number of workshops that we hosted specifically around hazard mitigation. And then we also folded in like tabling events to other events like the Botanical Gardens Earth Day Event. I believe I saw all of you in attendance there for that particular one. So really took in the public comment piece of it. And then ultimately now, we have completed the plan, have submitted it to the State of Washington for approval. The state will approve it and pass it on to the federal government to FEMA for their final kind of stamp of approval and we expect that in the next couple of weeks. So you can't talk about the natural hazards, but at least revealing some of the, the mystery behind the curtain, and that is where are our big hazards here? And according to the plan, the largest natural hazard we face is severe weather, which for most of us, probably not much of a surprise. Every year or two, we get a large, you know, snow event, ice event, wind event that impacts us. To score out these different hazards, we look at the probability as well as the potential impact, dollars lost, the impact to the community, to individuals, the business, economic impact and infrastructure as well. You'll notice that there are two different earthquake scenarios up there and that's just because they are vastly different. One of them is the Cascadia Fault Line, which is off our Washington coast, huge subduction zone there. It has a different impact than does, for example, the Seattle Fault Line, which basically runs under Interstate 90, kind of east-west direction. So taking into consideration all those things, we score them out and that helps us know where our money can best be spent. Some of the other ones that always get attention, I, I wanna assure everyone that volcano is on the list, we're not hiding a volcano in Bellevue. That is just because we are prone to ash fall. That is just because we are prone to ashfall and other things if many of the beautiful mountains around us were to happen to erupt. So once we really study and analyze and look at the hazards and the probability of them occurring, we worked with all of the different departments to help identify different strategies to try and mitigate the impacts of those. The map, I apologize, a little blurry, is our fire hazard map. And if you look at that, it seems to reason it's all of the highly vegetated areas around the city. And so some of those mitigation strategies are simple things like community outreach, management of, you know, grasslands or areas that are unkept, you know, proper maintenance of vegetation, and just good community information that way. There are a lot of different things that we can do in those mitigation strategies to try and reduce the impact, everything from earthquake retrofitting to simple things like public education. So the Hazard Mitigation Approval Process, as I briefly mentioned, we were very fortunate with the timeline of our plan in that FEMA just released a guidance this last, early in the year, and we were able to incorporate that into our plan, so we meet the latest guidelines and standards. We have submitted it to the State of Washington Office of Emergency Management for their review. It will automatically go to FEMA. We just got an update today that it's somewhat delayed in that process, as one might expect. And then ultimately, we will ask for adoption for the Hazard Mitigation Plan by Bellevue
Now, I'm going to give you a little bit of information on the Disaster Debris Management Plan that we also have been working on. So when we think of, that we think about our windstorms, right? We think about all of the different debris that will be out on the streets. And one of the main things that we want to make sure that we can do is open up the transportation system to be able to get our public safety, be able to have the hospital districts and things like that back open. So we knew that we needed to create some kind of plan so that we would have some action to be able to take. This plan, along with Hazard Mitigation Plan, are the first plans by Eastside Cities to be done specifically by the city itself. So some of the purposes and benefits of this particular plan, again, it lays out those roles and responsibilities that we're going to have when we have a large catastrophic event that has a lot of debris. It will tell us the resources that we're going to be able to use, basically how many and how much we're going to need. It also will minimize those recovery times. Hopefully, some of our mitigation actions are additive to this, but hopefully gets us back online to be able to get back to normal, whatever that might be after an event. We were able to facilitate local coordination with this. We did ask our neighboring jurisdictions if they would like to come aboard with us, and we were happy to have Clyde Hill, Hunts Point, Newcastle, Medina, and Euro Point join us in this effort. So it, we make sure that we have hit all of the regulation points and that through this guidance and following the directions from FEMA, we'll be able to better ask for FEMA reimbursement after the large event happens. So one of the things that the Disaster Debris Management Plan looks at are the different kinds of incidents that could happen. Obviously, we're very familiar with windstorms. We are also planning for the big one, right? The earthquake. So how we activate our plan, who's going to be responsible? It is actually under the purview of the Transportation Department to be the responsible branch to open up the debris branch and then work with our other departments. Making sure we have priority routes that get us to those hospital districts, that get us to the different commerce areas, that make sure that we can get around to the fire stations so that they can do their safeties. Making sure that we have debris collectors and haulers. We will not be able to do this with city staff alone. So being able to make sure that we have some that are already ready and know that they are going to respond to Bellevue, to be able to help that, to be able to respond to Bellevue and the cities that have come along with us on this plan. Having site monitors to actually watch the different debris that comes in, make sure everything is actually separated so that when it goes to our temporary debris sites, that it's separated properly before it goes to what we call its final resting place, which is usually in eastern Washington. So this particular table gives you an idea of exactly what we actually might look for when we're talking about the total debris that we could have from, we went with severe weather and we went with an earthquake. So that is about 3.5 million cubic yards of debris that we could imagine being here in the city. Take us about 180 days to be able to pick that up, and that's using other debris haulers and collectors to be able to do that. And it will take up like 216 acres of land when we're actually talking about all of the different kinds of debris. A cubic yard can be thought of as one washing machine. So think about three and a half million of those throughout the city. Large amounts of debris is what we're thinking about, and what do we want to be able to plan for? We think about the priority routes. We already are always planning the priority route. So on this particular slide, you see on the left-hand side happens to be the emergency routes for priority from the Transportation Department, and on the right-hand side happen to be the routes that were provided to us by the points communities. We also need to have some temporary debris management sites. So there are different regulations for them, and all of the sites that we have selected, and we did a process with the Parks Department to be able to go through and actually evaluate these. These are our top seven. We have tier ones where are preferred sites. They have to be at least five acres. They need to be flat. They have to have an excellent ingress egress, enough room to be able to actually put all of the different kinds of debris and separate them. A tier two is very close. It might not be exactly the five acres. It might have a little slope or something to it. The ingress and egress out of it might not be as much as we would like it to have, and maybe we have to put some of the debris closer together. But when we're looking at, you know, areas in the city, we don't have lots of just pavement because we are a city and a park. So you'll see that there are a lot of parks that are listed here. The nice thing about lots of the parks, they actually do have parking lots. And what we can do by using our own sites is that that allows us to be able to then put it back to what its normal was before the event happened. We also can try and work with some agreements in other places in the community, but we felt as we were going through this process, it was easier to be able to do it just with our own infrastructure to start with.
So our next steps. The Hazard Mitigation Plan, again, we're looking for council to provide some guidance for us to return with that plan. And then once we have FEMA approval, that will be completed and wrapped up, and then we'll begin the process of training staff on it and exercising the plan, which is part of our normal cycle. And for the Disaster Debris Management Plan, we are in the process of a request for proposal, and that is going out soon.
Hopefully, by the end of the year.
Perfect. Yeah. Hopefully, very soon to enter into a relationship with those contracted haulers and debris monitors, which is an essential piece of the plan itself. And then again, back to the training and exercise schedule with all of our other plans. So again, why we're here specifically for the Hazard Mitigation Plan is to consider, please, consider directing staff to return with a resolution for adoption of the City of Bellevue's Hazard Mitigation Plan at a future council meeting. And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So I'll just, you don't have to ask questions, but I'll give you everybody a chance. Councilmember Bargava.
Oh, okay. I do have a couple of things. They're not all questions, but maybe some are learnings for me. So on your risk assessment, I really appreciate that you have them categorized by level of likelihood and the various different types of risks. What I was looking, when I was looking through that, I was thinking like there are certain things that have a higher propensity of occurrence potentially, or probability of occurrence represent a higher threat, and they may not be the most severe. So how do we find the balance between the low likelihood, high severity event preparedness versus the other? Because it is an ROI question at the end of the day, like you started by saying. So how do we manage that? How do we balance that? Just looking for your point of view.
Yeah, that is an ongoing challenge that really is coordination between all the different kind of operational departments across the city and the planning process. I think the best example that came to mind as you were saying that is our snow response, right? Transportation does an amazing job in partnership with utilities at removing snow, plowing, sanding, icing, that type of it. And that's always a, it's a moving target. We never know from year to year what that's going to look like. Do we have the right number of plows? Do we have the right amount of equipment? And it's a constant ebb and flow and adjustment and balancing, and that goes with training and staffing and all the rest of it. So...
Okay. So maybe I'll just paraphrase one more time. Are we ready for a low likelihood, high severity event to happen?
It depends on how you define ready, right? The catastrophic Seattle earthquake could happen right now. Have we put plans in place? Yes. Do we have amazing staff and training and practice? Yes. Is it going to be sufficient? That is always the question that keeps us up at night.
That's all I was asking for, plans in place. So I appreciate that. And the only other thing, two things I would say is continuity of critical services. How do we think about that? Like what are the most critical services when you think about continuity in those situations?
Yeah, excellent. We're currently right now looking at the, we refer to all those as lifeline services, and those specifically are detailed out in our Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. And as we go through the planning process, whatever emergency situation we're looking at, we look at those lifeline services and how robust they are, where the gaps are, and what we can, what can be done to support those and make sure that those lifelines are resilient as they can be.
Okay. Appreciate it. And the last thing, I just to comment that I really appreciate that we've picked up and have a debris management plan, you know, coming out of the bomb cyclone, I don't know how many months ago that was, but I really appreciate the fact that we're putting together a plan and we're thinking through it thoughtfully, capacity and timelines and all of that. So I much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Sumant Duriya.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for creating this plan. I really enjoyed the tier two, and also I love the educational piece that we bring to the community to educate about the emergency plans. The slide you had is actually my kiddos. Those are my two, my kids, they learn so much. They still talk about how to save things if something happens. Because I think last time when we had the cyclone plan, my parents was like trapped at home for like a whole week with no food, and then it was really cold. In a situation like that happen in case, hopefully it doesn't happen again, do we have any plans how to reach out to the really vulnerable groups in the community? How we can like maybe bring, I don't know what's it look like, what, like just out of curiosity?
Yeah, for the bomb cyclone, such a widespread event like that, where mobility for responders is as limited as residents and business members, and so it is extremely challenging to get into each neighborhood and community and short of going door-to-door with 150,000 residents in Bellevue, there's not, there's not a great solution to that problem. We are working desperately with a lot of the community partners, neighborhood associations, anywhere that there's groups of community members that gather together, that we can, you know, multiply that force and have them check on their neighbors and loved ones and then share that information up really is going to be the key to being more resilient for the next one.
Yeah, I think that's a great model, by the way. That's really good. I think using information like made the ring, the next door, technology like that really helps with kind of supporting neighbors like that. Thank you. And then my another question is, there's one of the slides, you mentioned that every dollar of mitigation we prevent, can you remind me what's the number of the return on that?
Yeah, there's, there's two different studies that we reference. I was going to look to see what, if I had them both down. One's from the Department of Commerce, and the other one is a FEMA number, and it's somewhere between $6 and $13. So if you spend a dollar on a mitigation action, strapping down your water heater, that's potentially saving $6 to $13 of cost in the response after it falls and leaks all over. So, simple way to look at it.
Do we have information like that to share with the community?
Yes, we definitely do have those studies. We have a link, well, we had a link to them on our website. I'm not sure if they're still currently there, but yeah, real happy to get that information out in the community.
Is it in multiple languages?
Yes.
Okay.
All of our stuff on our website and emergency management is translated into our top languages.
Okay, great. Perfect. And then I think, I had one, oh, you know, I had one question about how the cities near us, we are working together with them, and I really enjoyed the map of priority path. And then other than the sharing the information and how to support each other, what did, I just, out of curiosity, what's that partnership look like for us to support, you know, the other cities, the smaller city right around us?
So the cities that are involved in the Disaster Debris Management Plan, we actually have contacts with all of them. I will say that we also asked the City of Redmond and the City of Kirkland if they would want to join us to kind of have a more regional type, as well as the Village of Bozarts. And at the time, it was not a good planning time for Kirkland or Redmond, and the Village of Bozarts declined to join us. So we do have connections, that we try to have annual updates of information with them to understand what their needs might be, to understand their routes, what kind of equipment they might be able to lend to the whole entire process as well. They're obviously much smaller, but being able to have that kind of connection and communication with them is how we're trying to move this forward as we try and do annual updates for making sure that our information is current, because we never know when that disaster is going to happen.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. I also kind of wanted to build on some of the comments that I've heard so far from my colleagues, and specifically around public outreach. And so I'm curious, what, what is our plan to support community members in such a ways that they can incorporate the Hazard Mitigation Plan and Disaster Debris Management Plan into their own disaster preparedness planning? Do we have a website? Do we have some materials? Are there things that they could print off and have available in case of a, you know, some kind of disaster and that they, they know how to kind of jump into action? What do we have for them?
Yeah, great question. Specifically for the Hazard Mitigation, we have a lot of resources available on the City of Bellevue's Office of Emergency Management website. Again, all of that is translated, including a number of kind of the top mitigation steps that anyone can take. And so those are well-spelled out. One of the pieces that, once the plan is completed, again, our work doesn't end, it begins the training part, and that training includes that public outreach to get out in the communities and say, here's what we've identified as our main hazards, and here's some ways we can be better prepared for those. And those will include kind of the latest, greatest information that we can provide on mitigation steps for residents, businesses, and other partners.
And then kind of a basic outline of what we plan to do so that they understand that and they can plug into that process?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. So this is great. I mean, it's a relief to know that you guys are doing this work. So every time you're here, a little sigh of relief knowing that we've done this planning and that we can all be as prepared as possible, understanding that we can't always prepare for everything. So great work. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Newen House.
Thank you, Mayor. Outstanding presentation. Thank you so much tonight. This is such an important topic and one that I think sometimes kind of dismiss, like, of course already, but, you know, we don't often get into the weeds a little bit on this. And it's really, I think all residents should feel good that we have people that are thinking about this, all the mitigation plans and all the other preparedness that we're doing in case something does happen. So outstanding. I always have one question, and that's regarding the local coordination with these partners. So I'm curious why Boarts wouldn't work with the City of Bellevue? And then I'm also curious about why some of our other Eastside partners wouldn't work with us as well, because, I mean, it would be to their advantage as well. We would need, I would think, maybe I'm wrong, that coordinating with Redmond, Kirkland, and other municipalities could only benefit how the whole region reacts to an event, regardless of what that event looks like. So I don't want to put anyone on the spot, per se, but I'm just kind of curious in terms of, do they have their own plans? We're good? We don't need it, Bellevue? Or, you know, what does that, what does that look like? Or how do we get to a point where we can fully develop the plan to cover the entire East King County area?
Yeah, so when we went into the planning process for the Disaster Debris Management Plan, we went into it hoping that we would be able to do that, that we would be able to create those relationships. Specifically for the Village of Bozarts, we were told that they were sure we were creating this plan because we wanted to put our debris in Bozarts. this plan because we wanted to put our debris in Bozarts. To which we couldn't have explained to them any better that they don't actually have any great areas to put any debris in Bozarts. And so we tried probably four or five times to have conversation, and they just were not interested because they were sure that something else was happening. For Kirkland and Redmond, because it's really important for us when we're actually thinking about some of our different transportation routes, that we have connections to, we really wanted them to be able to participate. And at that time, the response from Kirkland was that debris wasn't an issue for them to think about. And for Redmond, we had also been able to get dollars to be able to do this plan. And so they were going to have to participate with a very small amount of money to be able to do the discovery of their own equipment, disaster, you know, the debris they might have. And Redmond couldn't come up with the money at that time to be able to participate. They were wanting to, they just could not get any approval to be able to join our plan. And we had decided that we wanted to have our own standalone plan, because it's the best way for us to be able to get these haulers and monitors in our back pocket, so to speak, so that they will be available for us, so that we know when that disaster happens. They know that Bellevue is where they're coming. Seattle already has a plan, and they have theirs, all nice and secure. We wanted to have something like that. We thought it would be a, a great coordinated effort on the east side. And the ones that joined us, they'll be able to, you know, go on with those monitors and haulers as well. We just weren't able to do it.
Hmm. What was the, the cost of the, the fee that Redmond?
For them, it was $30,000.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you so much. And again, thank you for the outstanding presentation tonight. Really, really great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. It's great to have a, a plan, to be prepared for, you know, thinking about this and actually doing something to prevent, you know, not prevent, to address disaster, you know, and whether the debris, how to dispose of it, how to manage it, how to mitigate it. But I think it's more important also, maybe not more important, just as important, you mentioned about prevention, right? Or I don't know, maybe you can say a couple of words about mitigate. What do you mean by mitigate? Prevention is probably the best, you know, it won't happen. But when you mitigate, means it's already happened or before it happens? Or it could be both?
It could be both, but a lot of our mitigation actions, if you take the, the wind event, for example, a bomb cyclone, some of the mitigation steps include things like proper tree maintenance, right? By no means are we saying everyone should chop down trees, but, you know, having an arborist assess dangerous trees on your property, or properly prune trees so that they're much more resilient to a wind event. It's a simple mitigation effort that we can do ahead of time that hopefully will prevent the problem.
Okay, so oftentimes, of course, disasters are natural, which we don't know what's going to happen, what event's going to happen. My question then is, when it does happen, or what kind of things that people can do, the residents, all of us, can help to prevent certain things? Certain things cannot, it happens, like earthquake, right? We don't know when it's going to happen. If it happens, it happens. So are there other things that we actually can do something about?
Do you put the list up again with the rankings of all the risks that you are addressing? You just passed it.
No, that was the debris one.
Okay, there you go.
There you go.
So those are the things that they're?
Those are our top.
I'm not sure that there's anything that the community can do to prevent those.
What can we do on each one of these? So the public can actually be conscientiously?
Yeah.
Doing something? And keep that in mind. I think it's another prob, another question, I think, Councilmember Newhouse mentioned, is that we are just, are prepared? Wouldn't be surprised, yeah.
So we talked about the strategies that are in the plan itself, and for these different hazards, one of the strategies is actual education of the community for all of the different things they might be able to do, whether it's preparing their home, whether it's preparing, you know, themselves. That's how we will be able to help them to get ready for any of these that might be able to happen to the best of our ability, knowing that it's unknown exactly what that event might be. But one of our strategies will be education.
Okay, so we do see lots of that, that during the years, throughout the, whatever, we do get that kind of information, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we, the Office of Emergency Management just completed another community emergency response team training, 24 hours of, of training to help people be prepared for, for disaster. And some of those mitigation steps are covered in that.
Yeah, we do that with the snow, we do that with storms, flood, but oftentimes, many of these we don't even think about.
Yeah.
But I think it may be important for us to know as well. Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Chrissy and Carl, thank you so much. Andrew, Molly, Chief Tate. This is, to me, as exciting as a World Cup, by the way. Just wanted to let you know that this is a very, very critical plan. I am very happy that we are approaching these two. It's very important that we are becoming more resilient because of your job, and not just only respond to disaster, but how we prepare and reduce risk before it happens, as Councilmember Lee mentioned. It's a very amazing partnership you guys have done. I just have, and my first comment was the community awareness and education, that I think everyone talked about that, because I bet my money, at least on, no one in Bellevue knows about dam failure or a volcano. So it's good that we should spread this knowledge. I have three questions. The first one is, in this work that you guys did, have you done any social vulnerability mapping? Like some places is going to be disproportionately affect seniors, renters, low income, non-English? Have you guys have done that kind of work?
Yes, actually, that was part of putting together the assessment and part of the scoring. If you would want more detail, I would ask that our consultant, who's actually on the line, she can give you kind of a better background about how that was used, but that was something, that was one of the tools that we used in looking at the city.
I would love to learn about it later, you don't need to tell me, but I'm very happy that you have done this study. I think it's a great thing to have that in mind. I know we are doing something about our environmental stewardship initiative plan update. Do you guys see any correlation between this work and that work?
Yes, actually, we have been involved in both. We had the environmental stewardship people on our planning team, and we too have actually participated in the work that they have done, and both been able to give each other feedback on both plans.
That's awesome. This is all great. I think the last thing I have is about dollar. I think in the memo said there is no fiscal impact, or there is, as, as of this moment. But maybe the question is when, or how are we thinking about identifying dedicated funding mechanism for strategies or action items, or any of those?
It would be anticipated that the departments who put the strategies forward for the plan will be putting together proposals to be able to fund those kinds of things. We have a five-year timeframe with annual updates that we'll be bringing to you about the progress that we make on our strategies. And so that is part of it, is making sure the departments know that this is what we have put out basically on the floor to be able to try and work towards and showing how we would do that. So we would anticipate if there was a budget implication, that they would bring that forward as some type of proposal next year.
That's awesome. Really glad that we are taking this a step towards a more resilient future for Bellevue. It's really awesome, hopefully, and I'm sure you are doing to make us, make these documents, living frameworks to help all of our residents to be more prep for all of these risks that we are facing. So I appreciate all of your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have three questions. Since you have the slide up, now that I'm on the King County Flood Control District, I'm really surprised to see flood second to the last on the list, because we know that flooding happens quite a bit around our creeks in Bellevue, even though we've done some really good projects that's going to prevent a lot of those from happening again, but we're still at risk. So are we looking at those kinds of floods? When we, and why, if so, why are we, why is that below a volcano?
It, it falls lower due to the, the impact in the community. So the flooding risk that we have in the city, there are floods, areas that are impacted, as you well know and mentioned, but the economic impact to that is, is lower. There's not a direct threat or risk, or a very low score for human life or human health. It, it, property damage is fairly low from those particular flood events, or, or the economic impact. It's part of that just calculation, and it, that's where it ran, came out.
You know, I'd love to reexamine that, because when Kelsey, not Kelsey, when, in Factoria, when we had flooding multiple times, families in low-income housing, their entire ground floor apartments were flooded and all their possessions were ruined, and they had to move out, and they had to mediate that entire housing, and that happened the next year. And so it has a huge impact on people's lives. And living in areas that have flooded and maybe haven't been cleaned as well as they should be can be really bad on the health. So I, I just don't agree that this is innate on, on this scale, to be honest with you, and encourage you to maybe consider that.
Yeah, we'd have to go back and look at the exact calculation and, and what was taken into account, but for sure.
Okay, thank you. The other two questions I had, I know when we had our wind cyclone that we applied for FEMA dollars, I know that this city went above and beyond to have people working 24 hours to clear debris and get the power back on, and make the, make it safe for the people who are trapped in their neighborhoods and their homes. And so we applied for FEMA dollars to help compensate us for all that extra work. Did we ever get any compensation from the government?
No, we did not.
Okay, is it never going to come?
The state was rejected, and they, they did appeal, and that was rejected as well.
Okay. And then the other thing is, last time you came before us and we said you were going to do this plan and, and reassess everything, you talked about looking at our well system in Bellevue. We have old wells throughout Bellevue that could possibly provide water if we were to lose our water sources. Do you have any results on that?
That is part of the utilities departments, I forget the name of the exact plan, but it's their emergency water well program. And they did go out and assess the number of existing wells that at one point did provide potable water to the community. I know they're in the process with the Washington State Department of Health, Office of Drinking Water, that regulates well water, to assess which ones are viable as an emergency supply and having them reclassified. So some of them are in the process. I don't know the total number or which ones were the best options. Utilities was taking that and implementing that plan.
Okay, so it was that department. All right, well, thank you so much. I'd like to make a motion. I, I feel like this could come back on a consent calendar if the council is agreeable to that. Yeah, okay, would you like to make a motion?
I move to direct staff to return with a resolution adopting the city of Bellevue Hazard Mitigation Plan for action at a future council meeting on a consent calendar.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you very much. We have one more really quick item, but if we'd like to take a quick break before we do that, it's up to the council. You want to plow through?
I can do more work, please.
Just plow through?
Sorry?
Do you want to?
Do you want to just finish the meeting? I think Councilmember Lee also wants to finish.
Okay, let's do it then. So we have an ordinance, we had a long discussion about this. I don't know if it was our last meeting, I don't remember. Okay, last meeting, and so we asked that we bring it back to vote on as an ordinance, and here it is. And so we'll have a presentation, and if, we'll see if there's any discussion. If not, we'll just take a vote. Go ahead, city manager.
You did a fine job of introducing. So we have Krizna Tanis and Steve Penner here to just give you a tiny overview and then seek direction from council. Action.
Great, thank you, city manager Carlson. Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, council members. As you said, we were here not very long ago on the same item. It's repeat offender sentence enhancement, AKA mandatory minimums. So Steve and I are back to do this short presentation and have you consider adopting this ordinance. Very short presentation for you. We'll recall council direction, and then we'll go through the components very briefly of the ordinance, and then come back to the direction requested. Recalling council direction, as you know, the intent that you had outlined for this item is to reduce public disorder crimes in Bellevue that has been identified as theft crimes. On September 23rd, we were here, and the direction that you had given us is to prepare this ordinance for action, and in addition to that, to include inpatient treatment alternative as part of that ordinance. The components of the ordinance, just again, a short kind of information here, the crimes included are theft third-degree crimes. The repeat offender definition is 18 years or older with two or more convictions of theft in Washington State in the past two years. The minimum sentence that would be subjected would be 30 days for these repeat offenders. We have several discretionary provisions, one of which is the new addition that you directed us to include, which is the inpatient treatment alternative for defendants meeting a certain criteria. We also maintain the two other ones in electronic home monitoring when there's substantial risk of harm to the defendant, and then if eligible defendants could still participate in diversion programs, including community court. And we're back to the direction slide, so turn it back to you, mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. So I don't have any further questions myself. Does anybody here have any comments or questions? Okay, with that, I'd like to take a motion. You go ahead, Councilmember Newen House.
I move to ordinance 6866, adding a new section, 1.16.030, to chapter 1.16, enforcement provisions of the Bellevue City Code to impose repeat offender sentence enhancement for certain theft crimes. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you. So it passes six one. All right, I think that's it, and we will see you all next week. Thank you.